Hallelujah. Good night, everyone. Welcome back to another Bible study. It's so good to have you here with us. I'm greeting everyone who is online and everyone who is on their way. We pray that you are, that the Lord will bring you here safely. And we pray for everybody who is just reaching in and we give God thanks for you for being here. And we just want to truly praise the name of the Lord this evening, this afternoon. Just want to give Him honour and glory unto His name. Cause He deserves all the glory, all the honour and all the praise. Amen. Hallelujah, hallelujah. Say, "You deserve the glory and the honour." Oh Lord, we lift our hands in worship as we praise Your holy name. You deserve the glory and the honour. Lord, we lift our hands in worship as we praise Your holy name. For You are great, You do miracles so great. There is no one else like You. There is no one else like You. You are great, You do miracles so great. There is no one else like You. There is no one else like You. You deserve, You deserve the glory and the honour. Lord, we lift our hands in worship as we praise Your holy name. You deserve the glory and the honour. Oh Lord, we lift our hands in worship as we praise Your holy name. For You are great, You do miracles so great. There is no one else like You. Oh, there is no one else like You. Yes, You are great, You do miracles so great. There is no one else like You. Oh, there is no one else like You. Oh, there is no one else like You. Oh, there is no one else like You. Cause it is to You I give the glory. It is to You I give the praise. For You have done so much for me. Yes, Lord, we bless Your holy name. It is to You, holy Father. No one like You. And I will bless Your name. Bless Your name. And I will bless Your name forevermore. It is to You, yes, it is to You, I give the glory. It is to You, I give the praise. For You have done so much for me. And I will bless Your holy name. It is to You, holy Father. There's no one like You. And I will bless Your name. Bless Your name. And I will bless Your name forevermore. Hallelujah, hallelujah. We bless the Lord's name. Oh, I will bless Your name. And I will bless Your name forevermore. Oh, forevermore. Hallelujah, forevermore. Yes, Lord, forevermore. Let's worship the Lord. Hallelujah, hallelujah, hallelujah. You are awesome, oh God. You are awesome in this place, mighty Father. You are worthy of our praise. To You, our lives we raise, mighty God. You are awesome in this place. Hallelujah, hallelujah. You are worthy, mighty God. You are worthy. From the rising of the sun to the going down of the same. You are worthy, you are worthy. You are holy, you are holy. You are worthy, oh God. We bless Your mighty name this evening, oh God. We bless Your mighty name this evening, oh God. And we just give it all unto You. We just give it all, the praise, the glory and honour. Despite what would have happened today, yesterday or the days before. It is now the time, this is now the moment. We give to You, mighty God, to bless Your name, to glorify You, oh God, in all that we do. Especially what we are doing here. Diving into Your Word, knowing more of You, understanding what You are calling us to, oh God. And seeking You further for directions and guidance. So that we may execute with excellence, mighty God. Bless Your name, God. We bless Your name, God. We bless Your name, God. Hallelujah, 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 hallelujah. To worship You, I live. To worship You, I live, I live to worship You. Oh, to worship You. Oh, to worship You, I live, I live to worship You. Oh, we sing, oh. To worship You, I live. To worship You, I live, I live to worship You. To worship You, I live. To worship You, I live, I live to worship You. Yes, Lord, yes, Lord. Hallelujah. You are awesome in this place, mighty God. You are awesome in this place, oh Father. You are worthy of all praise. To You, our hearts we raise. You are awesome in this place, mighty God. You are, you are awesome in this place, mighty God. You are awesome in this place, oh Father. You are worthy of all praise. To You, our hearts we raise. You are awesome in this place, mighty God. Poor God is an awesome God. He reigns from heaven above with wisdom, power and love. Poor God is an awesome God. Poor God is an awesome God. He reigns from heaven above with wisdom, power and love. Poor God is an awesome God. Poor God, poor God is an awesome God. He reigns from heaven above with wisdom, power and love. Poor God is an awesome God. Poor God is an awesome God. Poor God is an awesome God. We worship an awesome God tonight. We worship an awesome God this evening. An awesome, awesome God. The only person, the only being that the word awesome truly fits. In His awe, He is more. What a God, what a God. That is the God we serve. That is the God we praise tonight. That is the God we go to. That is the God who wrote the word that we are about to dive into. When we read the word, when we come to Bible study, let us remember the God who, who has written this word. Let us remember the God who has written such a word via through man. That age to age, it continues to stand. That no matter where or when, no matter what situation, no matter how much society tries to change things and turn around things and makes it seem like, you know, it's, it's, it's a new thing. A lot of things are so, are still old things that are trying to be brought new. The word of God continues to stand strong amongst all books and science and all things that have changed. Can you imagine? There have been millions of books written on science and, and different things and that have changed. And continually they have to keep updating these books, updating these books, updating what was written because things change. But our God and His word has never changed, has never changed. And it continues to remain the same for yesterday, today and forevermore. And that's amazing. Mark the age you are now, mark the age you are now. And when you reach another age, see if anything has changed about God's word to your life indirectly to you. See if anything has changed about what it is that He calls us to, what it is that He, He, He shows us in principle to live by. Hallelujah, hallelujah. You are worthy, God. You are worthy of it all, my Lord. You are worthy of it all, oh God. You are worthy. And so tonight, we just want to, um, ask if there are any requests? If you have any requests, you can always put it in the chat. Is there any spoken requests here? Pray for our young men. Seems like we're losing them a dime, a dozen. Pray for students doing internal exams at this time. I was going, before all that, I was going to say prayer for you. So it seems the youth are on our minds. Prayer for, prayer for those who are grieving. Um, there are lots of lives that have been lost. Whether by accidents or incidents or deliberate actions. Praying for those who are grieving at this time and seek comfort. And that they may find comfort in Jesus and not in their own flesh. That may lead to even more death, more misery. Alright, so let us pray. Just gonna ask everybody inside to stand and we're just gonna pray. And in your own space, be prayerful as well. Just a reminder, we're praying for young men. We're praying for students who are doing internal exams. Overall praying for the youths. And we are also praying for persons who are grieving loss, family, friends, whatever, loss at this time. So most righteous and heavenly Father, we just wanna thank You, mighty God, that we get the privilege to come tonight and be here with You, almighty God, in this space. And be able, oh Lord, to call out unto Your name, to cry out unto You, mighty God. To petition unto You that which is on our hearts. Things, oh Lord, that I believe that You also would have put on our hearts to speak for and speak about. And, and pray for, almighty God, so that the, the word and that the, the power may go into the atmosphere and You will work through it, almighty God. So even though, oh Father, we just wanna thank You for that privilege. We thank You for that honour, oh Lord, that You would bestow upon us, almighty God, Your power, almighty God. As long as we believe and have faith that You are working, oh Lord, we know that it will be done. So Lord, we pray for our young men. We pray for our young men, oh God. We pray, oh Lord, that they find You, those who do not know You, that they find You, oh God. That they seek Your face, oh God. Those who, oh Lord, who do not know You, almighty God, as Lord and Savior, will come to know You as such. Will come to know You as their hero, their rescuer, as a father, as a brother, mighty Father. I pray for those who know You already but are struggling, cannot find their way, feel as if they don't know their purpose, mighty God. I pray that You will find out, find a way, almighty God, to continually reveal it to them. Set around them good community, good friends, good family, good people, mighty God. So that they can be led in the right way. Set around them encouragement, mighty God. Because it's not easy, oh Lord, to walk this walk as a man, oh Lord. It's not easy, oh Lord, with the weight upon our shoulders, responsibilities, even before we knew them, mighty God. Oh Lord, I pray, almighty Father, that You will carry your sons through. That You will carry your sons through. And that You will teach them and guide them, oh Lord, through the efforts of others, almighty Father. May You bless them in mighty name of Jesus. Lord, we pray for those doing exams right now, internal exams. Lord, I pray for those who have been diligent in their studies. That You bring back to the memory, almighty God, everything that they have studied. I pray that You quicken the ones, quicken the ones, almighty God, who haven't even started. And maybe are fretting and are having fear. Oh Lord, I pray that You quicken them even now. That they may read something that will align and make sense, that they will remember something that happened in class that made sense to be able to go into the exam with it, mighty Father. But most of all, Lord, I pray that You dismiss fear, dismiss fear from them. Some, sometimes, some, sometimes, almighty God, have so, so much fear that creates anxiety. That creates some uncomfortableness within their own bodies, mighty Father. I pray, oh Lord, that You dismiss fear from them, mighty God. Oh Lord, I pray that You will have praying parents over them, mighty God. That they themselves will not be too stressed either, or not stress the child, mighty God. So that they can be able to concentrate and be, and know as well, Lord, that they are loved. And, and, and show that love to their children, mighty God. Letting them know, oh Lord, that they just want them to go in there and do their best. That they just want them to go in there and do the best that they can, oh Lord. That they will be loved all the same, mighty Father. That they will be loved all the same, mighty Father. I feel that heavily and strongly, mighty God, I pray, oh Lord, oh Lord, for students who may feel as if they will not be loved if they fail this exam. They will not be cherished, they will be disowned, they will not be seen or want to be heard because they're failing exams, mighty God. I pray that You put the love of God in their parents. I pray, almighty God, that you, if, if it, that is such a thing, that you change their hearts. And let parents show their children that they are loved no matter what, oh Lord. That one thing doesn't change their entire life, mighty God. That it doesn't turn it away from who they are, their parents to them, the ones who bear them up and love them, mighty God. Hallelujah. Mighty God, we pray for those who are grieving in this time. We've seen the bloodshed, we've seen, mighty God, the accidents. We know that the blood on the earth is crying out unto You, oh God. We pray, almighty God, that You comfort those who have been left behind. To pick up the pieces, to make sense of it all. To work through the dynamics of not having this person around. Whether they were the breadwinner or the laugh giver. Whether they, almighty God, was the one that was, that used to put each people at ease. Or they were the ones that protected them in the time of need. Lord, even now, I pray, almighty God, You comfort them, oh God. Set people around them, oh Lord, that don't have, necessarily have to have all the answers. But are we just willing to be present, to be present, to be there, oh God? We bless Your name even now, we thank You, oh God. Even now, I ask that You bless Your manservant as he comes with another word for us this Bible study Tuesday session. That you may have, that you may download in him even more than what he may have right now. That he may be led by you and not by flesh. That he may be led by your spirit, mighty God, in what you want to say and what you want to do, mighty Father. We honour you and we thank you. And we ask that you continue to be with us in this time. In Jesus' name I pray, amen. That's gonna welcome our pastor, Reverend Everell Edwards.
Thank you, Brian. Good evening, everyone. And thank you for the effort to be here and for joining in. Serving notice on the folk who are online again. That we are counting on you to contribute. At least by the reading of the texts that are many this evening. And so, yeah, your participation is welcome. Tonight, we are turning to God's word again for the encouragement that abounds in it, especially as we go through trying times. How many people would agree that we are living in trying times? At, at least two persons agree with me that we are living in trying times. See if we can get this sorted out here. More, more than trying times, forgive me. Let, let's pray. Father, we want to thank You for Your faithfulness to us. Thank You, Lord, for the assurance that before we got here, You were here. You fill all things. You are the guide through Your Holy Spirit. You're going to lead us into the truth that You want us to retain. That which is going to build us up as we will live for You. And as we live, Lord, not, not just surviving. We want, oh God, to be more than conquerors because that is what You have ordained for us to be. Speak Your truth, we pray then. And glorify Your Son, Jesus, in our lives and through us. In His name we pray, amen. Question, are you living your best life right now? Are you living your best life right now? Don't answer out loud, think about it. Next question, what do you have? And can I repeat it? What do you have? And can I repeat it, what do you have right now that could be used to make your life better? Think about it. Brian, it's being recorded? Can you record it? Record it, alright. What do you have right now that could be used to make your life better? Third question, what do you think is hindering you from living your best life? What's getting in the way, what's stopping you? There is this tendency that we have, we being human beings, to complain and to search for greener pastures and to help meet that need, the need for greener pastures. Somebody came up with artificial turf, plastic grass, that if you have the right colour, but if you slide on it, it will burn your skin and you can't eat off it. Well, I read this morning of a young lady. She is the granddaughter of a billionaire company owner in Germany. And somehow, her story caught my eye. But she said she was going to give her inheritance, listen to this, she's going to give her inheritance away to seventy different church-related social groups, seventy different organisations, because she was interested, has always had the goal, the aiming mind, a passion of hers, to redistribute wealth. And they found, they quoted her, this is the BBC, in an article entitled, "Citizens' Group Decides The Fate Of Here's Fortune." Here is what she said, her name is Marlene Engelhorn. She says, "My inherited wealth elevated me to a position of power simply by virtue of my birth." Simply because of who her parents were, she enjoyed a position of power. From way back in 2021, this young lady said she wanted to hand out at least ninety percent of her wealth, because she had done nothing to earn it and she had merely struck lucky in the birth lottery. Now, there would be very few of us who would want to give our ninety percent of them inheritance. I'm not pretending, eh? I'm not pretending, it would be a move of God for that to come first and priority in my considerations. I can think of some causes that I would want to support, but the ninety percent takes some thinking over. No. I read the figure is twenty odd million she inherited. Yeah. Yeah, alright, come back here. God asks Moses, "What is in your hand?" And that has stuck with me for the last couple of years, because you and I are battering and stressing ourselves seeking the good life, forgetting that in godliness with contentment, there is great gain. When we spend priority, energy and time, effort in going after this good life, and no matter how much of the good life we get, we still want more, because the good is not good enough. Here we have somebody who has it, money, and wants to give it away. God asks Moses, "What do you have in your hand?" What's the relevance of the question? This woman gives away what she inherits simply because she have a problem with inheriting it by virtue of her birth. Opposition leader Golding says he did not do anything to get his British citizenship, he was just born. His father was a British citizen. At the time of his birth, he was in Jamaica, ruled by once Great Britain. So it goes automatic. Where are we going? Me and you don't come to what we have by right, by entitlement. Hello? Because we were born in sin, shitting in iniquity, and in sin did our mother conceive us. So it's not a right we have. What we have has been given to us by the design and the determination of a sovereign, all-wise, all-knowing, ever-present creator. God of all the earth knows everything, is everywhere at the same time, and he is all-powerful. What we have as believers was given to us by the choice, by the will of this great God. So somebody's asking, what do we have? Alright, so let's probe a little bit into this business of what we have and the fact that it has been given to us by the will of God. John 3:16 is an obvious place to start, that God so loved the world that he gave his only begotten son, that whosoever believes in him should not perish but have everlasting life. That's the greatest gift, indescribable, and it is given, is not lost by chance or circumstance. It is God giving it to whosoever will. So in response to his choice, you and I now have a responsibility to choose or a right to choose or refuse. Help please, somebody find 2 Timothy, chapter 1, verse 8 to verse 10, John 10, verse 10, and 1 Corinthians, chapter 2, from verse 11 to verse 14, 1 Corinthians 2:11 to 14, and 2 Peter, chapter 1, verse 3, are for the persons who are online. Alright. So 1 Corinthians 2:11 to 14 and 2 Peter, chapter 1, verse 3, those are for persons on Zoom. And for those of us who are here, John 10, verse 10, and 2 Timothy, chapter 1, verse 8 to verse 10. These verses are underscoring the point that what we have, what we enjoy in this life is God's conscientious determination, his design, his choice that makes it available to us. Alright. Ready? John 10, verse 10. Beth? Oh, okay. Alright, 2 Timothy, chapter 1, verse 8 to verse 10. Alright, we'll come back to John 10, verse 10 in a little bit. And again, in the meantime, for the folk online, you're looking up 1 Corinthians, chapter 2, verse 11 to 14, and 2 Peter, chapter 1, verse 3.
2 Timothy 1:8-10. "Be not thou therefore ashamed of the testimony of our Lord, nor of me is prisoner, but be thou partaker of the afflictions of the gospel according to the power of God, who have saved us and called us with an holy calling, not according to our works, but according to his own purpose and grace, which was given us in Christ Jesus before the world began, but is now made manifest by the appearing of our Savior Jesus Christ, who have abolished death and have brought life and immorality to light through the gospel."
Amen. So Paul says that the calling that he shared, the relationship with God, the purpose in life, was given to him by the unique deliberate choice of God. Not something he earned through his learning. John 10, verse 10.
"The thief committed not before to steal and to kill and to destroy. I am come that they might have life and that they might have it more abundantly."
Alright, so there is again specific purpose in Jesus coming to earth. And those purposes, that purpose is in contrast to what we see the devil coming for, the thief coming for. He has come that we might have life and have it more abundantly. Okay, online folk, who has 2 Peter, chapter 1, verse 3? On mute, please.
2 Peter 1, verse 3, are you hearing me?
Yes, we're hearing you.
"For his divine power has bestowed on us absolutely everything necessary for a dynamic spiritual life and godliness through true and personal knowledge of him who called us by his own glory and excellence."
Amen. How did we come by everything we need for life and godliness? Through him who called us by his own purpose and glory. Someone else online, 1 Corinthians 2:11 to 14.
1 Corinthians 2:11 to 14. "Bless Satan should get an advantage of us, for we are not ignorant of his devices. Furthermore, when I came to trust to preach Christ's gospel and a door was opened unto me of the Lord, I had no rest in my spirit, because I found not Titus my brother, but taking my leave of them, I went from there into Macedonia. Now thanks be unto God, which always calls us to triumph in Christ and make it manifest with Saviour of his knowledge by us in every deed."
Alright. 1 Corinthians 2:11 to 14. It's sounding a little different, Sister Camille, from what I have. Oh, King James, oh, okay, okay. But again, what we have through the Spirit of God has been freely given to us by God. Freely, meaning generously, without discrimination, but purposefully by God. So then, what do we have? Let's talk some specifics now about what we have. What do we have? What is it that makes you, makes me celebrate, rejoice, enjoy the relationship? What does it, what do we have that gives us joy and wants us, causes us to endure and persevere? Sum them up for the purposes of a one-night Bible study in three headings. One, we have access to God through Jesus. We have authority in the Son, and we have ability or enabling. We have access, we have authority, and we have ability. Now, I know it sounds grand, because we can't have all of that, and yet still it seem like we are struggles up. Hello? Hello? Praise God, we're not among people who are struggling in here. Alright, let's go into a little detail. When we talk about access, what are we talking about? Firstly, we're talking about pardon for our sins. Our sins have been washed away. As far as the east is from the west, so far has he separated us from our sins. We can go back to John 3, verse 16, or 1 John, chapter 1, and verse 8. Pardon for sins. God cannot countenance sin. When Christ was on the cross, He cried out, "My God, my God, why hast thou forsaken me?" Because at that point, He was bearing the sins of the entire world, past, present, and future. When He came back from the dead, the veil in the temple that separated symbolically man from the presence of God was torn from top to bottom. It was something initiated by God. It's not from the dirt, from the ground up. It's from the top to the bottom, the Scripture tells us. So the middle wall, the partition, is broken down. In breaking it down, you and I not only have forgiveness of sins, we are elevated, as Minister Hillary reminded us a couple of weeks ago. We are lifted up. This one is for persons present, Romans 8:16 and 17, and for the brethren on Zoom, Ephesians 2:11-13. Sister Andrea, you can read Ephesians 2:11-13, and we take a volunteer for Romans 8:16 and 17. We're talking about what makes up the access that you and I know have as believers. We're saying that firstly, pardon for our sins. Two, elevation, we're lifted up. We were strangers and cast down, but Christ has lifted us up. Ready? Ephesians 2:11-13, and Romans 8:16 and 17 for those who are, okay, I haven't said in-house, those who are present here. Alright, Ephesians 2.
Ephesians 2:11-13. Therefore, remember that at one time you gentiized in the flesh, called uncircumcised by what is called the circumcision, which is made in the flesh by hand. Remember that you were at that time separated from Christ, alienated from the commonwealth of Israel and strangers to the covenant of promise, having no hope and without God in the world. But now in Christ Jesus, you who once were far off have been brought near in the blood of Christ.
Okay, one time we were strangers, cut off, had no right to the commonwealth of Israel, aliens, without hope and without God in the world. But now in Christ, you who were once far off have been brought near by the blood of Jesus. Romans 8:16 and 17. When we hear them, the brethren, it's alright if you say hallelujah. It's alright if you say amen. Eh? Romans 8:16 and 17.
The Spirit itself beareth witness with our spirit that we are children of God. And if children, then ears, ears of God and joint ears with Christ. If so be, that we suffer with Him, that we may be also glorified together.
Okay, thank you. So now, talk about elevation. We who were one time strangers, aliens, cut off, now we're told we are raised with Christ. Eh? Hello? Hello? We are now ears of God, joint ears with Christ. If indeed we suffer with Him, that we may also be glorified together. Lord, we thank you that we're not worthy, but you still found it appropriate, right, desirable, that we can be glorified together with you. That is how much you love us. It is how unworthy we are, but how elevated we are. Remember now, from Ephesians 2:11-13, we were cut off, separated from the covenant and commonwealth of Israel, strangers to the promises of God. Hear what Hebrews 4:16 and 17 says. When it, when we look a little deeper into what it means to have access to God. Hebrews 4:16 and 17. A volunteer? Hebrews 4:16 and 17. 16 is the last one? 15 and 16, 15 and 16, forgive me, 15 and 16.
We do not have a high priest who cannot sympathize with our weaknesses, but was in all points tempted as we are, yet without sin. Let us therefore come boldly to the throne of grace, that we may obtain mercy and find grace to help in time of need.
Alright, remember now, foundation, starting place is, we were strangers to the commonwealth. We were aliens, didn't have access, without hope. Now we're being encouraged that because Jesus, a high priest, who is touched with the feelings of our infirmities, our weaknesses, and who was in all points tempted as we are, remember he took on sin, the former sinful man, eh, yet was without sin. Now, he says, we can come boldly to the throne of grace, that we may obtain mercy and find grace to help in the time of need. We have access to God through prayer. And boldly here, I want to suggest, is not just a right and a freedom to come and tell God what you want. Eh? Yeah, hello? We can come confidently that we're coming to a father who knows how to give us good gifts and who does not upbraid him, don't child. Eh? You don't have to grovel because you are look something. You are his child, so you can come with confidence and tell him. Eh? I read again Solomon's prayer at the start of his kingship. And he did not ask for things. He asked for a heart of understanding and wisdom. And God says that even though you never ask for things, I'm going to give you things. Me and you don't even know what we ask for. We need it and we don't even know. God ever bless anybody here beyond what you ask for? Anyhow, yours are depend on your own prayer to survive. You are dead long time. Mark 11. God knows what we need. And then Ephesians 1:3-6. So we have been forgiven. Our sins have been removed from us. We are lifted up in our standing. One time we were running up and down without God in the world. Now we are ears of God and joint ears with Christ. And we have access to the King of Kings, the Creator God, the one who fills all things. We can come boldly to Him. And then we enjoy fellowship with Him. Ephesians 1:3 to verse 6. Ephesians 1:3-6.
I'm reading from the NIV. Praise be to the God and Father of our Lord Jesus Christ, who has blessed us in the heavenly realms with every spiritual blessing in Christ. For He chose us in Him before the creation of the world to be holy and blameless in His sight. In love, He predestined us to be adopted as His Son through Jesus Christ in accordance with His pleasure and will to the praise of His glorious grace, which He has freely given us in the one He loves.
Okay, the new King James Version ends verse 6 like this. That the end, the aim of what God has done for us is this. It is for the praise of the glory of His grace by which He made us accepted in the beloved. So we're accepted, eh? We have our home, we have fellowship, we have a dwelling place. Alright. Lord, have mercy. Have mercy. Next thing, we're talking about what we have, what has been given to us that enables us to live life abundantly, life with purpose. Next thing is authority. What do we mean by authority? Because very often, you and I feel like this big world out there is about to swamp us, suck us in. We are just trying to dance through the raindrops to make progress, to make a success out of our undertakings. Simply put, authority here is the enablement to represent God on earth to others. We want to know what this man been drinking. Authority is God's enablement to represent Him on the earth to others. Matthew 5, Jesus says, "You are the light of the world." He says, "You are salt." Here is an example of what it means to represent God in the earth. Man, no. Ephesians, Genesis, sorry, Genesis, Genesis 2:15 and 19. 2:15 and verse 19. That's for in-house. At home, read Exodus 4:16 and 17. In-house, John 1:12 and verse 13. At home, Daniel 11:32. In-house, Matthew 28:20. And by not assigning persons to read, I hope all of us not finding the same passage. At home, Luke 10:18-20. In-house, John 16:22-24. And at home, 2 Timothy 1:7. We, remember now, we're looking at what it is we enjoy as Christians. What is it that God has given to us that we can live our best life? The abundant life that He has designed, prepared for us. And we've said, first of all, we have access to Him and we have authority through Him. Let's hear how Scripture now spells out that authority. Genesis 2:15 and 19.
Genesis 2:15 and 19. The Lord God took the man and placed him in the garden of Eden to work it and watch over it. The Lord God formed out of the ground every kind of animal and every bird of the sky and brought each to the man to see what he would call it. And whatever the man called a living creature, that was its name.
Amen. Alright, Exodus 4:16 and 17. From the fold at home.
He shall speak for you to the people, and he shall be a mouth for you, and you shall be to him as God. And you shall take in your hand this rod with which you shall do the signs.
So God is telling Moses that I am going to speak through you to Abraham, Abraham, can you imagine, to Aaron. You're going to speak to Aaron, and you are going to be authoritative, representing me to him. You understand why Moses had a problem taking on the work? John 1:12 and verse 13. That was for here. At home, find Daniel 11:32.
But as many as receive him, to them gave ye power to become the sons of God, even to them that believe on his name, which were born not of blood, nor of the will of the flesh, nor of the will of man, but of God.
Alright, so not only do we have power, what it means is we have authority. And the authority we have is not a result of who a mother and father is. It's the fact that God, It's the fact that God, as we believe on his son, Jesus Christ, gives us the authority to what? Be called the children of God. Daniel eleven, verse thirty-two.
Against the covenant shall be corrupt by flatterers; but the people that do know their God shall be strong and do exploits.
Okay, so, in, 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 you know, today, today, perilous times, eh? When men's hearts are feeling them for fear. Daniel prophesies to us that the people who know their God will be strong and do exploits for him. And, and, and me and you sometimes, when we get caught up with, with the overtime that them don't pay we, or how we don't get the promotion that we're supposed to get, we, we sometimes react in ways that close the door on us accomplishing some great exploit in the name of our Father. Because opportunity came, but we were focused on the wrong thing. We, we, we adopted the victim culture rather than the victor culture. And, and people get the false impression that them control our joy and them control how we live before God. Eh? Matthew, chapter twenty-eight, verse eighteen to verse twenty. Remember, we're talking about the authority that we enjoy as believers. We're asking ourselves the question again, what is it that we have in our hands? Matthew twenty-eight, eighteen to twenty.
Then Jesus approached and said to them, "All power in heaven and on earth has been given to me. Go therefore and make disciples of all nations, baptizing them in the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit, teaching them to observe all that I have commanded you. And behold, I am with you always until the end of the age."
Okay, all authority, all power has been given to me in heaven and on earth. Go therefore. And, and me and you fret so we not have no bucket of. If we wanna go there. We wanna face the lion. Jesus says, "All authority has been given to me in heaven and on earth. Go therefore." Hmm? Go therefore. The basis upon which we go is that the Father sent us. He says, "Go in my name." Go like you represent me. Huh? Luke ten, eighteen to twenty. That's for those of us who are somebody who is at home. Luke ten, eighteen to twenty.
From eighteen to twenty. And he said to them, "I saw Satan fall like lightning from heaven. Behold, I give you the authority to trample on serpents and scorpions and all, and over all the power of the enemy; and nothing shall be, and nothing shall by any means hurt you. Nevertheless, do not rejoice in this, that the spirits are subject to you, but rather rejoice, because your names are written in heaven. Jesus' redemption is in the Spirit."
Amen. Amen. Now, now, how many people here have tread upon scorpions before? Hello? Yeah, man, in the physical. Anybody here aware of all of what God has saved you from? Eh, I, I know, I, I say all, because some of the things that him save us from, if we didn't know, we probably would have wet up ourselves. Huh? He says he gives us authority to tread upon scorpions and serpents. This is his word. "I give you the authority." And, and, and there is a selectivity to that, no? All mean all. John sixteen, twenty-two to twenty-four. John sixteen, twenty-two to twenty-four. That's in-house, right? Okay.
And ye now therefore have sorrow; but I will see you again, and your heart shall rejoice, and your joy no man take it from you. And in that day ye shall ask me nothing. Verily, verily, I say unto you, whatsoever ye shall ask the Father in my name, he will give it you. Hereafter, have ye asked nothing in my name; ask, and he shall receive, that your joy may be full.
Alright. Remember John ten, verse ten, Jesus said, "I have come that you might have life and have it more abundantly." Here he is reminding his disciples, reminding his audience that, yes, now you are in sorrow, hmm? But there is appointed joy for you. Up until now, you have. And in that day, verse twenty-three, "You will ask me nothing. Assuredly, I say to you, whatever you ask the Father in my name." Again, that is right, that is privilege. In whose name? On what basis? We're doing it in the name of Jesus. We're asking for what Jesus would want. We're asking in keeping with his will. Up until now, you've asked nothing in my name. Ask, and you will receive, that your joy may be full. We, we, we must not be under any illusions as to what God's intent is for us. And me not talk no prosperity gospel either. Eh? We're going to come a little into that later on. So, we pause to ponder a little bit here and ask ourselves some more questions. What are we spending our authority on? Heard, heard the funny story a couple of years ago of a, a, a dynamic evangelist who went into a business place, saw somebody who he knew. And the person, well, the person was behind the counter, and he saw other people coming out of the business place with a, a souvenir, a giveaway. And of course, he went up to his friend and asked, "Ask the people with this thing. Can I get one?" And the, the lady courteously, pleasantly talking to her friend said, "No, I, I'm sorry, no, they, they are for some select customers." My friend said, "In the name of Jesus, I must get one." So, ask the question again. What are we spending our authority on? Is it to satisfy self, private ambitions? Next question. What are your life priorities at the moment? What is the thing you are going after most right now? What is the thing that you would give anything to have right now? Third one. Could your, could your priorities be changed? And if so, why would you change them? Hmm? Second Timothy, chapter one and verse seven. When we talk about the enablement to represent God on earth to others, here, here the word of the Lord to us. "God has not given us a spirit of fear, but of power and of love and of a sound mind." Sometimes we see opportunities, we see challenges, and the spirit of the Lord is saying to us, "Don't be deterred." And put in our hearts, put in our minds that we, whatever we call it, put it in our spirits, that this is a particular course that I want for you to tread. But we say, "No, sir, that enough for me. Leave that to Sister Felina and leave that to somebody else, eh? Cause that is not in my pay grade. You not save long enough." Huh? "God hasn't given us a spirit of fear, but of power and of love and of a sound mind." So, we've looked at access, we've looked at authority. We look at ability. The possibilities are endless. I, I, I like, I like the story where Jesus goes to a man who is, is crippled and ask him, "What do you want me to do for you?" "I don't have no questions, no doubt as to what I would answer." Eh? Because he can do anything with him, nothing is impossible. So, we come back to the question. What are our priorities? Ability. Enablement. Deuteronomy, chapter eight and verse eighteen. It is God, it is the Lord who gives you power to get wealth. Philippians four, verse thirteen. "I can do all things through Christ who strengthens me. I can do all things through Christ who strengthens me." Now, where would all stop for you? Hmm? Where have we allowed all to stop for us in the past? Where are we allowing all to stop for us even now? When you say the possibilities are endless, is a, is a challenge for us not to put any limits on our God. You have some people in your family who you want get saved. Not impossible with God. Eh? Not impossible. You, 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 you are burning with desire to become involved in something in service to God and others, but you're afraid. Not impossible with your God. You have, you have a, a business idea. Can we go there? You have a business idea. And you're saying, "Boy, me not see how that all go happen." Huh? Well, what is holding you back? Why you not see? And then when somebody else come up with it, you're gonna say, "Boy, if me did know."
So, the question is, why, why do we always think less of ourselves even when others see the potential in us or God sees that potential in us to be more than?
Because we're up against a thief. Hmm? Him, him want to steal, him want to kill, him want to destroy. And he is a deceiver. Hmm? When we, when, when me and you come to the place where we, we yield to, to, to God and what he is prompting us to say or to do, it becomes more difficult for Satan to get in our way. Joseph, for example, had to deal with his brothers, first of all, being dream killers. Then him had to deal with him mother and father being dream killers. Then him had to deal with the two other prisoners when he went down into Egypt, who were dream killers. But all along you keep hearing God was with him. And as long as me and you want obey God who is with you, you're going overcome. Sometimes we hold back ourselves for true, eh? And, and, and the, the, clearly, God can't work with what we don't give him. It's what we surrender to him that him work with. There are reasons, when we talk about ability, we must bear in mind, not only can we do all things through Christ who strengthens us, not only is it that it is God who gives us the power to get wealth, but every one of us have something that we can use to glorify God. If that is not the case, God is not fair. God is not just. He make the rain fall upon the just and the unjust. He make the rain fall upon the bright and the not so bright. Some people get five talents, some get two, some get one. But everybody accountable for what them do is the one where them get. We are stewards. Hmm? And, 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 and everybody who does. And, 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 uh, everybody who do something with what them get, get more. No sir. Matthew twenty-five fourteen to twenty-nine. We're not going to read that one here, but we can read it before we go to bed. Matthew twenty-five fourteen to twenty-nine. Here are some hindrances then to our not fulfilling the potential with which God has blessed us. Because we have to know where the little foxes are. The things that eat away and rob us. Ignorance. We don't know what God has provided. We don't know what we have in him. We don't know, we, we don't know why it's for. We have it and we not, we not treat it like, and, and a nothing. And even if it looks small to us, God will bring it to our attention, like him ask Moses, "What is that in your hand?" As far as Moses concerned, it's a staff, piece of stick. Good height, strong enough, not look like it a go rotten. But God can make more of it than what you think it is. Bible says that Moses was trained in the, in, in the culture and the knowledge of the Egyptians up to the age of forty. And with all of that learning and experience, him say me can't talk, me stutter, me have a lisp, whatever it was. Hmm? So we ignore, neglect what God has given to us. Everybody say them like your food. But no sir, me can't buy that stand above a no hot stove. Sorry. I'm sorry, it, it miss a prawn of voice. Or without, without. You know, yeah, but our fear. And once we talk about fear, we know fear not come from God. Very explicitly Paul says, "God has not given to us a spirit of fear." Or our pride. Me to go do that? Or me to go take advice on how to do this better? Pride working on Holy Power, you know? I, I used to see, I knew a gentleman who did what we thought as young boys in the church, a menial job. To the point where off the record around the corner, we would be imitating him in the course of his work. Till time come and, and the children them start go all kind of big school. But I see him menial work. Where we think, me not do that. Pride wouldn't allow if we do it. And then we, 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 we hinder ourselves by the wrong motives, the wrong reasons for which we want to accomplish things. James say we have not because we, we act with the wrong motive. And then we have not because sometimes we're just plain and simple, lazy and careless. Opportunity come and we fold we hand. And say, "Well, me welcome money in a bank, you know, so go on with that." Slotful, complacent. Am I suggesting to us that we become greedy? No. Bible says, "Godliness with contentment is great gain." But there is nothing wrong with using what God has given to you to grow. Grow don't mean you become greedy and obsessive with money, you know? So we close with a little caution. Yeah. Evening, if you are unhappy. Right. Evening, if you are unhappy with where you are now. If you are unhappy with where you are now. If you not think you have accomplished all of what you ought to have accomplished by this tender age of your life. If you are unhappy, don't go into any depression and wonder, "What my life, what is about?" Don't do it. God is not done with you yet. Same God and these same opportunities and the same provisions, the, the access, the authority, the ability, they are still available to you as long as you have life. He's still God and him can still turn it around. I, 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 I worked for a, a rich man in this country for a little while. And one day I sat with this very good friend who also worked for him. And he was telling me the story of how this man out of the blue turned his life around. To the point where he became very wealthy, very famous, very influential in this country. Him say, up until mid thirties, this rich man was just a little idle playboy running around the country. Somehow, somehow, him life turn around. He was. He was. Oh, okay, okay. Well, wh- what limitation are we going to put on, on, on God and God's purposes in real life? Huh? You are as young as you feel. What, 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 what limitation? I ask the question again. What limitation are we going to put? Yeah. What limitation are we going to put on our God? So the word to us brethren is, is this. God has made provision for us, not just to pass through life. He has made provision for us to live abundantly. He has made provision for us to know what real contentment is. And, and, and we should not be content with doing less than our best. Think about it. Know we need to be praying some more. But me alright. Gentle Jesus, me can't mind to hold me. Do I want more of him? Huh? I know I have the ability to do better in terms of managing me time, being a steward of me time and me money. Am I just content with what I am doing now? Because me not want it look like say, me want do everything. Am I doing my best? Let's bow heads. No, hold on. Any questions or comments? Because we've, if my memory is, yeah. Yes, ma'am.
Only the best is good enough. But what if your best is not good enough?
For who?
For you.
For you?
Yeah.
You, you must know, you must know too why you want to do your best.
What you feel like you're falling short.
Eh?
You feel like you're falling short.
Okay. If, if, if you have given your best, you will know. But we must also consider, we must also bear in mind, what, why do we want to do more? Impress John? Impress Mary? Keep up with the Joneses? Why do we want to do the more? And I know, I know, I know our financiers going to tell you, um, inflation going eat out what you have when it comes to the thing. As long as we the priority, we're going to have inflation. When last few years, it didn't go down in price. Huh? In, in your short life? I, I walk in a, I walk in a T S T a couple of months ago and take out two hundred and fifty dollars and tell the lady I want that chicken patty. Like, where you come from? I, I, at, at the time, I was twenty dollars short for a patty. When medical boy go to school, who could, who could, a bun, three dollar, three, 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 which three dollar? Three cent. A patty, six cent, and a tall Kelly's soda, nine cent. Fifteen cents for me lunch. So now, 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 the, the business of- We must be careful. Yes, you want to plan ahead and you want to be, to be, to be as safe as you can. But if, if you follow that alone, you, 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 you work till you drop down dead and still not realize the goals recommended by our financial advisors. And some people say, "Boy, me not have the chance enough." But you, you, you can, well, careful where you listen to, to what me say because me have some kind of ambition. Any other question? Anybody online have a question or a comment? No? Alright. Nothing in the chat, Brian? Alright. Let's stand. Sister Angela? We asked for prayer last week, don't it? You, you, you close in prayer last week? Oh, okay, alright, alright. It's a good thing because we're asking to close in prayer this evening. And, and give thanks for the offering too while you close.
Let us pray. Father, we just want to thank you for tonight. We thank you, Lord God, that you brought us together, Lord, in this fashion to hear your word. And we just want to thank you, Lord God, for what you have imparted on us. And we pray, oh God, that as we leave from here, Lord God, we will not just be errors, Lord God, but towards your word. We just want to thank you for each and everyone that is here in house and those at home. We pray, God, that you will continue to bless us individually and collectively. Lord, we pray for the offering. I pray that you will bless it, Lord God, as it do the, the work for your church. And we pray, God, that as we go, you will go with us. Cover us under your mighty blood, we pray. And we give you thanks in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Little reminder, our information, Sunday coming, we are going to have a baptism, water baptism. So please bear it in mind, be praying for the candidates. Water baptism, Sunday coming. Quite possibly, but the baptism going to happen. Yeah. Alright.